Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for January 4th, 2021. As a reminder to our online viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the city council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Here now to begin the meeting is Mayor Roy DeBuell.
Thank you, Adrian. Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You're hereby directed to call the City Council, held on Monday, January 4th, 2021, at 5:30 PM and conduct virtually for the purpose of conducting a work session on the COVID-19 pandemic update.
Thank you. Attendance is as follows. Mayor Buell. Council members Kavanaugh.
Here.
Jones. Councilmember Jones. Okay, moving on. Lynch.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Assistant City Manager Cory Burbach.
Thank you, Adrian. As we have done for most of 2020, we're going to start 2021 with an update from city staff and our partners on the status of COVID-19 in our community and our response. And so I will kick things off by turning it over to Mary Rose Corrigan, our Public Health Specialist. And following Mary Rose's presentation, we'll go right to Alexis Stager, Housing and Community Development Director. And we'll pause after those two for questions. Mary Rose?
Thank you, Cory. This is Mary Rose Corrigan, Public Health Specialist for the City of Dubuque Health Services Department. And I'm going to share my screen here. Do I have the right one up, Cory?
Yep, looks good.
Okay, so um the Public Health Incident Management Team continues to meet on a daily basis, at least, as we coordinate with the Dubuque County Health Department, the Dubuque County Emergency Management Agency, and the Dubuque Visiting Nurses Association with Stacy Killian, Patrice Lambert, Tom Berger, and assisted by our Public Information Officer Randy Gale. Kind of a different way of looking at how our cases are progressing. We've had a big change between the total number of cases in November versus December. In November, we had 3,538 cases, new cases of COVID-19, and in December, that number dropped to 1,341. So definitely a decrease in the amount of community spread. I think the community contact and spread also is reflected in our testing numbers. When in November, we had, we were well over 7,300 tests given in Dubuque County, and in December, it was over 3,500. So fewer people are getting tests tested, which may indicate and probably does indicate lower potential and exposures happening for community spread. We continue to check our establishments for compliance with the Public Health proclamation the governor issued and our own city face covering requirements. And we've done compliance-related inspections on 92 food establishments. We, in the last couple of weeks, we referred one additional establishment to the alcoholic beverages division for further follow-up. So this will be ongoing until the proclamations and the face covering ordinance are no longer in effect. Our hospitalizations remain steady and, which is a good sign, the capacity at the hospitals is fine right now. We, they have adequate staff and room, and this is what we want to protect. So this has decreased since the beginning of the month and remained fairly stable the last week or so. Our 14-day average positivity rate also took a big dip in December. Slight increase here in the last couple of days, but overall, we are sitting much better on our average positivity rate. For the past seven days, it has been 7%, and the 14-day has been 11.4. So we're cautiously optimistic about this lowered positivity rate, but we know that there could be a post-holiday surge in the next couple of weeks, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. Likewise, the new cases seem to be spread fairly evenly among all age groups within the community, and this is the last two weeks in December. So you can see each of those age groups is fairly close with one another, with the 18 to 29-year-olds and the 50 to 59-year-olds having the highest numbers of cases. A breakdown of the deaths experienced in Dubuque County since the pandemic began, this is the age breakdown in these categories. COVID-19 has been the underlying cause of 131 of these deaths and contributing factor to eight of the deaths. 136 of these deaths have had pre-existing conditions of some kind, and none of the deaths have been in individuals under 50 years of age, and that is for Dubuque County residents. So a little bit of update on where we are with vaccine distribution, which will pretty much take up the rest of my presentation. So in Iowa, there's over 1,600 providers that have signed an agreement with the Iowa Department of Public Health and meet the requirements to be a vaccine provider and receive that vaccine. In Dubuque, we have 58 sites, including hospitals, long-term care, medical providers, and pharmacies, which also have quite a few sites to distribute vaccine. I want to give you a little bit of information on the federal operation warp speed and how that relates to what we're doing right now. This is a slide that's from the CDC website, and this component or this slide really only explains, it doesn't explain all the mechanisms involved in warp speed for the vaccine development. It includes mostly the manufacturing and distribution. So CDC will receive and approve vaccine orders from Iowa on a weekly basis, and then these allocations, based on local public health input, will be distributed directly to the providers that have agreed to be vaccine, have signed up to be vaccine providers. And you can see those are on the right-hand side of the slide. And it also includes the necessary supplies to administer the vaccine. Then, as these vaccines are administered, they are put into a web-based system, which then feeds information back to the Iowa Department of Public Health and eventually the CDC on how much vaccine is being actually given to people. So right now, in Iowa, we are in Phase 1A priority, which is healthcare workers and long-term care residents and staff. And the majority of our first few weeks allocations have been given to our hospitals and some to three of the major clinics in Dubuque, Crescent Community Health Center Medical Associates, and Grand River Medical Group. Now, the Iowa Disease Advisory Council is the group appointed by the state to determine the priority groups and when they will be rolled out. I do want to say that, so the entire state will always be in the same priority group. So in other words, all of Iowa is doing healthcare workers, long-term care residents, and staff. And we will not move to the next priority group until the whole state completes that. So the way this shakes out is that, for instance, some of the smaller counties will finish up their allocation for this priority group sooner than some of the larger populated counties who actually have more of the healthcare workers in their communities. And so those communities that are finished with 1A will not receive allocations until the rest of the state is caught up. So we will move from priority groups as a state in order to have solid distribution of the vaccine to the priority groups throughout the entire state. So this kind of outlines what Dubuque County has received so far, based on the weeks and the type of vaccine. So we have received 2,750 doses that can be provided to 2,750 people. This week, the doses received were 1,950 Pfizer vaccine doses, but those will be the booster doses for the, those receiving the vaccine the first week that was received. So although those are additional doses, though, those won't be for new people. Those will be getting the second dose into the first allocated dose people. So who will get vaccinated next? The priority group goals, for 1A especially, are based on the fact that we want to maintain hospital and healthcare capacity, and that means keeping our healthcare workers safe and free of COVID-19 through vaccination. We also want to decrease death and serious disease, which we know that the majority of deaths are in the elderly population. Obviously, preserve the functioning of society. We also want to reduce the extra COVID-19 burden on those groups and populations that are facing health disparities and other social indicators of health disparities. And the Iowa Disease Advisory Council will be deciding the next priority group after the 1A of the healthcare workers. So how will I get vaccinated? Well, there's quite a few options based on who has signed up to be a vaccine administrators. It could be through clinics or medical providers' offices, in other words, where you have your primary healthcare provider, hospitals, pharmacies, public health clinics, work sites, or other sites as determined by the Iowa Disease Advisory Council. And the reason this is somewhat fluid is it may depend on how the priority groups are determined. So for instance, within 1A, we know not all healthcare provider offices have signed agreements to be vaccine providers, such as some of the smaller clinics, dental offices, places that provide just physical therapy, those kinds of facilities. So as vaccine becomes available, we'll be working with our vaccine provider partners, such as the clinics, hospitals, and pharmacies, to administer vaccine to those outlying healthcare offices and their workers. And as we move into other priority groups, depending on who has capacity and the ability to serve those groups at the time, will determine, you know, who can assist in providing those vaccines. We also are prepared to provide some public health clinics, utilizing their VNA and other staff will bring in for the pockets of populations that can't be served by those that have agreed to be vaccine providers in the community. And our VNA has signed up to be a vaccine provider. So the Center for Disease Control has made some recommendations on other priority groups, the next one being 1B. And the populations they put in 1B are rather broad, and there are going to be some high numbers, too. And that would include people living in congregate living facilities, such as group homes and shelters, and senior independent living facilities, those kinds of things. They also included those over 75 years of age, emergency and law enforcement personnel, food packaging and distribution workers, teachers, school staff, childcare providers, and adults with high risk or underlying medical conditions. So these are probably going to be the starting point for the Iowa Disease Advisory Council to review as they determine the next priority group for Iowa. And then Priority Group 1C would follow, and that would probably, the CDC has in that group the 65 to 74-year-olds, underlying, people with underlying medical conditions, other essential workers, and the list of other essential workers is pretty extensive and includes things like food service, housing construction and finance, those who work in transportation and logistics, information technology, energy, other public safety, and also public health, which is where our public health staff would fall. So when will I get a COVID-19 vaccine? Well, we don't know exact dates, and it depends on a lot of factors about how quickly and the vaccine supply can come from the manufacturers and how it can be distributed. But the state has supplied us with some basic estimates of numbers of people in some of those categories I mentioned. So for instance, we have over 4,800 healthcare workers in Dubuque County, and that doesn't necessarily include some of the staff that is necessary to keep facilities running. For instance, at a hospital, you have to have environmental services and janitorial staff for infection control and cleaning. They're not a direct healthcare worker, but they would have contact with patients, so they would be added to that group under the Healthcare Worker 1A. We also have several thousand long-term care residents and staff. We have over seven, almost 18,000 people that are greater than 65 years old. And of just the Medicaid population, we have close to 3,700 people with chronic medical conditions. Our critical workforce includes 9,367. So if you look at those numbers and you see that we so far have received 2,750 doses of vaccine, you can see that this process with the current allocation schedule is going to take a while. We'd like to think that we will start to get more doses of vaccine. So along with the vaccine planning, which is really taking up the bulk of our team's efforts, we continue to work with schools, both pre-K through 12 and the higher ed, our long-term care facilities, which the VNA works with daily, especially those that are experiencing outbreaks, which we have four of right now. And our Emergency Management Agency continues to respond to requests for PPE. And we're also working on marketing and community education plans for the general public and those other groups that will be offered vaccine in the future as to the safety, the reason for the vaccine, and why it's important, and other factors of how they will get it. Our VNA continues to field a lot of calls and serve as our call center. They've done over 31,000 calls to date, and lately, they've been a lot about vaccine. And so those are most of our activities since I last spoke with you, and I think we're going to do questions after the housing presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mary Rose. We'll go to Alexis now, and Alexis, I'll pull your slides up.
Thank you, Cory. This is Alexis, Housing and Community Development Director. Just want to give an update on our rent, mortgage, and utility assistance program. So to date, Cory, you can go to the next slide. Sorry, let me pull this up. To date, we have over 800, or over 800, like, pre-applications that we've received and processed and let people know if they were eligible or not. It was pretty much a 50/50 split on eligible versus ineligible for the pre-application. Those that were eligible received a full packet to do a full application. And so that's what you see here on the right is the people who returned a full application. There was 154 of them. Of those 154, 108 of them were denied. We had 27 that had been approved and paid, and we have 19 that are currently pending, and they're just going through reviews at this time. The number-one reason we have for denial is just not following through with documentation. As we've talked about in the past, this program is heavy on documentation required to prove you had a COVID-related loss, as well as how many are in your household, et cetera. This is a federal program. Our second reason, most common reason for denial is not meeting the 25% decrease in income. So the program used to be a 50% decrease in income due to COVID, and you would qualify. Two months ago, we revisited the 50% and reduced that requirement to only 25% loss, as we saw several dual-income households where only one was affected. And so we were seeing a 25% decrease was actually causing a significant hardship for a family. And so we updated those, and, but we're still seeing some are getting denied because they don't even meet that 25% decrease in income. And then our third is that the income loss was not due to COVID. As you may know, we have several low-income or moderate-income families that have other reasons for income changes, and this program just is not made for that. This is a CARES Act program only. We do, whenever we have a denial, that we still feel they need assistance with any rent, mortgage, or utilities. We do send them to other programs throughout the community to see if they will qualify in other programs. So a couple of other things. The total amount that we have paid out is just over $63,000. We've allocated $104,000 to this program, so we are over 50% in the program. Majority of that has been paid out since the change to the 25% decrease in income. Of the 63,000 paid out, just under $13,000 went to mortgage, $39,000 went to rent, and just over $11,000 has gone to utility payments. So we are looking, we are still doing those applications. We're still receiving those applications. And as you may have been aware, the moratorium on evictions has been extended to January 31st for non-pay due to COVID-related reasons. We do want to continue this program until we see that moratorium lifted as we think there will be additional need as landlords start to file for non-pay evictions. So we are going to keep going on that program. Next slide, Cory. So it's just, the other funding source that we had is we applied for a community foundation, a Greater Dubuque grant, to help us process applications that still were in need, but just barely just weren't meeting our qualifications for the 25% decrease or any of the other qualifications for the federal program. Of the 25,000 that we were awarded, we have given $12,658 out to 18 different families that were identified. So those 18 families were denied the CARES Act funding, but then received to the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque funding. All right, next slide, Cory. So the next, the next program that I just wanted to talk about briefly is our nonprofit assistance that was also allocated out of the CARES Act funding received. So we allocated $129,000 to the nonprofit support. We have now allocated all of that 129, and you can see here the organizations that receive that funding. This is how much they've been allocated. Each one of these is at different stages of reimbursement of that money based on their program. So some were related to getting school support, and we're going to see that continue to be spent throughout the school year. Same with childcare and For Mounds Heart as well. They're spreading that over the fiscal year to make sure that they can continue their operations as they were affected by COVID and their operations and some fundraising opportunities depleted. So these are the programs that are also meeting our goals in CDVG to assist low-to-mod income residents. So these are our central nonprofits in our community that kind of keep us going on the CDVG low-to-modered income assistance side. That is all I have for today.
So Mr. Mayor, we'll pause there for questions that council might have for Mary Rose or for Alexis.
Hey, thank you, Cory. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Brett Kavanaugh here. Yeah, just have a quick one for, I think, actually, it is for Mary Rose. And first of all, thank you for both of you for all of your work continuing on with this. Strange, think a year ago today, we were not here at all talking about this, but this has been a constant discussion for us. So, Mary Rose, I've been reading a lot about this new variant of the virus that is mutated, and it's apparently shut down the entire country of Great Britain at this point. I'm just curious if there's any discussion about that in your discussions with the Iowa Department of Public Health? If that's something that we are planning for, or if that has come up in any way?
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. That's a good question. We, the Iowa Department of Public Health is monitoring for the mutated or variant COVID-19 virus, and they look at certain specimens and tests and send them off to CDC to determine if they are in that category. We haven't had one identified yet, but there have been tests submitted for that analysis. It's not unexpected to see a virus change over time as it spreads throughout society and communities. This is a common thing. And although, you know, the news media is reporting that it seems to be more easily spread, I think the research and studying that is still ongoing, and we're not really sure if it's spread more easily or not. At this time, it appears that the vaccine will be effective against this form of the virus and that it doesn't produce symptoms any worse than would be with the regular virus. So they're continuing to monitor that, and we'll be informed if we have cases in Iowa and if we need to do anything differently. I think if we do need to do anything differently, it'll be more on the contact tracing end and the laboratory end.
Okay, thanks for that information.
Hey, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Corrigan, I want to say that I've gotten several comments from people in the community that seem to see a dramatic drop-off in the numbers that are posted in the newspaper and in different spots around the community. It seems to be like half of what it used to be. And I've heard some say, well, it might be because of the mask mandate, because of one thing or another. Is the drop-off in the community pretty dramatic, and can it be attributed to one or two type of things that have caused that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. I will say that if you look at the overall EPI curve from when we started, there's been a few peaks and valleys, or waves, as we call them. So whether these waves are due to our mitigation strategies, the requirements in the proclamation, people adhering to social distancing people adhering to social distancing, mask-wearing, and all those other things, we'd like to think that's the reason they're down, but we can't be sure of all of that because it seems as though when the Upper Midwest is experiencing a surge, what I've noticed anyway, the rest of the country may not be surging. And right now, the rest of the country is having a big surge, and places like Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and, and some of the Upper Midwest states are not experiencing a surge. So I think the, the virus moves as, as people travel and, and different factors. It's also affected by what we're doing and the practices of not mingling over the holidays, limiting travel, those kinds of things. So it could be all of those things. It could be the virus's natural way of spreading because we know that it just continues to seek out people that are not infected yet. And if those people give the virus an opportunity to infect them, then it will. And so all, all of those things play into effect. I, I, I think our governor's proclamation and our city's face-covering requirement have definitely played into the lowering of cases. And we always see like a lagging effect of any strategy we put into place. And so these are, these are, these are working and to keep the numbers down. Now, if we loosen things up, the cases may increase. They may increase in the next couple of weeks based on what people did over the Christmas and New Year's holidays. And then again, the weather plays a big factor. We don't have outdoor festivals and large congregate gatherings like we did in the warmer months. And quite frankly, we're not having many indoor places to congregate either. So that is factoring into the equation. So there's, there's a lot of things. I think the important thing is that the numbers are accurate. And you can see from the one slide I showed that our cases are down significantly in December. So is the testing. So all these tests are reportable, whether they're negative or positive. And, you know, I'm, I'm confident with, with the numbers we're seeing and that they do reflect what's going on in the community right now.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I just wanted to say, on the other hand, when I talk to medical, medical professionals, they are beat. They are, you know, worn out. And so we need to continue to help them as much as we can, and I'm sure you agree. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone have another quick question, and then we're going to move on because we still got three presenters.
Mr. Mayor, this is Danny Spring. Yes, so, right. Short question for Alexis in housing. You'd mentioned that there are folks that aren't able to properly fill out the forms that we're trying to help with. Is there a way that we can simplify the forms? I know with COVID, you guys aren't, your department isn't exactly able to meet face-to-face. Is that an option? Can we simplify the forms any?
So we actually are meeting face-to-face here with applicants because the need is so great and affects lives so greatly, we can't just say no. So we're doing one-on-one, we're doing follow-ups. When we, usually the documentation that gets missed is just, you know, we need a pay sub from a employer, and the person just never follows through. And we, you know, we touch base, we phone call, we do emails to try to remind them, hey, if you need the assistance, we, we just need this last verification. And those are the type of documents that get missed. There's not a way for us to pull those in another manner. So they have to be documented. The best we can do on those types of things is reminders. But we are meeting one-on-one for those that struggle with just filling out an application. It's pretty simplified at this point. It's very simple of like address landlord name and who you are. So we've gotten it down to just the basics for the actual application.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, well, if anyone else has any questions, let's hold them until the end and see if we have any time. But we've still got three presenters. So thank you, Mary Rose and Alexis, and I will turn it back over to Cory.
All right, well, maybe we can help you a little bit. Unfortunately, Danielle Peterson from the United Way was unable to join us this evening. So we have two presenters from our community partners who are working in the community. First, we'll hear from Jenna Manders, and then after Jenna, we will go right to Rick Dickinson and do questions after Rick's presentation. Jenna?
Thank you, Cory. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, well, thank you, Mayor, and City Council and City Manager for the opportunity to present today on the community's Disaster Recovery Fund. As you know, this fund is housed at the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque and was activated in mid-March. So I'm going to give you a quick update on about the past six weeks or so since my last update, and then a year in review for 2020. So right before we presented in November, you had approved that the DRA gave the fund five hundred ninety thousand dollars instead of putting that in their endowment. This broadened the range that the fund actually serves. So we opened it up to the ten counties that the DRA grants typically impact. In total, we've granted two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seven dollars since November fifteenth. Just a quick recap on the Dubuque grants. We had three thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars to the Y for some PPE, ninety-five hundred dollars to Convivium for their casserole program, three hundred and fifty dollars to the school district. They had the meal sites that's covered by the USDA funding, but they needed some tents as the winter approached. Resources Unite, we were able to grant eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This was to help them buy a box truck that they could use as a mobile pantry out into the region, the rural parts of the county. But also when they get donations such as furniture and other items, they're able to use that now. Hillcrest, sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars for homeless outreach. The Boys and Girls Club, twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars for food. Red Cross, ninety-five hundred dollars, and this was really to help with their disaster relief, but in a more COVID-safe way. Operation Empower, three thousand dollars for food. The food pantry, we gave twenty thousand dollars for food and also twenty-five thousand dollars to buy a lift. And this was really to help alleviate the burden on the volunteers, which is largely older-based, but it's able to help them lift the food into the pantry. Stonehill, twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this is for making more mobile activities for their, their residents. The Regional Transit Authority, nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars for Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels was typically delivered by volunteers, but with COVID, many of the volunteers being elderly, RTA has picked up that service, and they hope to go back to volunteers in February. Two by Two, ten thousand dollars for social emotional learning kits. Paradise Church, we did eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars out of the Disaster Recovery Fund for Pastor Stan to be a community connector for the Marshallese to connect into the resources, not only health-related, but job-related and other resources in the community. And then we use the Dubuque Marshallese Health Fund. The Paradise Church really serves as an instrument in that community and quarantine shelter, various reasons for that church. So we, we funneled that, the rest of that grant for forty thousand dollars for Paradise Church. And then forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars was our most recent grant for the Dream Center. And one of the exciting things about this grant and the way our committee works really showcases is when their application came in, it had a couple of gaps. So our staff was able to work with the grant writer there and discovered that the Dream Center went from providing after-school programming four days a week for two hours a day, so eight hours a week, to offering full-day programming, seven hours a day, five days a week. Now thirty-five hours a week due to the hybrid model and helping students impacted by COVID. They're now providing meal three times a day plus snacks. They serve about fifty to sixty kids per week in person. And when you count the kids who they support in the virtual learning environment, they are supporting one hundred and ninety kids total. So our grant for forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty was to help cover expenses just for that additional programming in the month of January. And if schools are not that person in February, we told them we would look to offer a larger grant to them. In totality, since March, the Greater Dubuque Disaster Recovery Fund has granted one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Just over forty-one thousand of that was for childcare, one hundred and ninety thousand for education, five hundred and seventy-five thousand for food, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand for general assistance, fifty-six thousand for health, and thirty, thirty-one thousand for human services, and seventy-one thousand for PPE. And then there were a couple other smaller numbers for nonprofit assistance, support of vulnerable populations, elderly, and other disaster relief. There's still about five hundred thousand dollars left in the fund, and our committee continues to review grants weekly to really address the needs that are still coming up due to COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna, and we'll wrap up the evening with Rick Dickinson.
Thank you, Cory. Rick Dickinson, President of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, located at nine hundred Jackson Street. I reside at two oh five Hill Street in Dubuque, Iowa. And Happy New Year, Mayor Buell, members of the council, city manager, and staff. I'm going to give you a brief and quick update, knowing you're, you're tight for time, on how COVID-19 has impacted the regional economy in the Greater Dubuque area, focusing on the MSA at Dubuque, which is Dubuque County Metropolitan Statistical Area of Dubuque. I'm pleased to report that in November, which is the latest unemployment data we received on a month-to-month basis, we dropped to three-point-three percent unemployment from three-point-four in October. That's the good news, but the rest of the story is more concerning, and we need to address. If you recall, peak unemployment occurred in April of 2020 when we had over ten thousand folks that were unemployed in our market, which provided a twelve-point-nine percent unemployment rate. We continued to climb back to normalcy up until August of last summer, when we hit about three thousand, five hundred folks that were unemployed. But I, unfortunately, we've sort of hit a plateau, and we can't seem to break above that. We track unemployment in many ways, and we track employment in many ways. There's the number of people who work in Dubuque County and reside in Dubuque County. That's what determines your unemployment rate versus the labor force, the number of people working. But we also track then the number of people working in Dubuque County regardless of where they live. If you looked at the number of unemployed with folks working regardless of where they live, we're down three thousand, five hundred from last year. But if you look at Dubuque proper and the folks who live and work in Dubuque County, we're down five thousand, two hundred folks, fewer folks working today than a year ago, which is very alarming, despite the fact that we have three percent unemployment. One percent of our employment population is approximately six hundred people. So that three-point-three should be somewhere in the neighborhood of two thousand folks, yet fifty-two hundred people are not working today versus last year. They haven't left, but they are, for a variety of reasons, unable to rejoin the workforce. As we have that very large number of reduction in workforce, simultaneous to that, we have over six hundred and forty-two postings. We have six hundred and forty-two postings on access to Dubuquejobs.com for opportunities in the Greater Dubuque area today, which represents one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four jobs. There are currently six hundred and, three hundred and sixty-nine resumes posted on that site. So why do we have so many people who are not working and are still here, even though we have a fairly low unemployment rate at three-point-three percent? It's because we believe of the circumstances that COVID-19 has presented to families, women in particular, the fact that children are having difficulty, families are having difficulty placing children in childcare, or the hybrid system of, or educational system necessary because of COVID-19 is putting tremendous pressure on one or more of the parents or members of the household to stay at home with their children, which is really putting downward pressure on the ability of people to return to work. I am pleased to report the Dubuque Initiative, a private nonprofit group here in town dedicated to downtown redevelopment, has committed an additional five hundred thousand dollars in loans to small businesses with employees of fifty or less. This will be a total of one million. The first half, five hundred thousand occurred last summer. They just opened it up today for an additional allocation. And they had eight applicants, six of which have been referred to ECIA Business Growth for full application. That program provides ten thousand dollars of zero interest for six months and one percent interest for the remaining thirty months of a three-year loan. And businesses can apply for that by dialing the, the business helpline, which is in partnership between Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the SBDC Office, and East Central Intergovernmental Association Business Growth, and the principal, which is Northeast Iowa Community College. They're eligible for a ten thousand dollar loan, again, zero interest for six months, one percent after that, with monthly payments after the first six-month period. Greater Dubuque Development is updating our website on a weekly basis for businesses to refer to for safe-at-work and other changes and programs available. We, of course, are combing through, as are other organizations, the, the recent legislation to determine what we can do to assist businesses, in particular, small businesses, and applying for the benefits made available by that legislation. And I'd like to, again, remind folks listening, the citizens, if you know of someone, a small business is looking for assistance, they can go to that COVID-19 business helpline, which, again, the number is five six three, five eight eight, three three, five zero. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Hey, well, thank you very much, Jenna and Rick. Anyone have any questions? Okay, I don't hear any there. Are there any other questions from Mary Rose or Alexis? Okay, well, thank you to all our presenters this evening. I hope that we're rounding the curve here. I know we still have to, to look at the New Year's holidays and see what effects that's going to have. But hopefully, a month from now, when we have another major update, things will look much better. Certainly hope to see a lot higher numbers on vaccinations. And so thank you to everyone for all that you're doing to, to get us through this pandemic. And there being no further business on our work session, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.